The following program is a co-production of Seattle Channel and Seattle City Club, and sponsored by Comcast.
With four city council incumbents moving on, it was dubbed the change election. Was it?
In this case, I think politics were national for us. When Amazon dropped $1.5 million into our local election...
This is an election that's really important, but declaring victory is more about the work that's going to happen after the election is over.
Engaging the city's social and political landscape with experts who track the data.
Three out of four people who've moved here recently are basically millennials.
The top-line conclusion was they wanted to change the people and get new people in to keep doing the same thing that the council did.
It's all coming up on Civic Cocktail.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our post-election Civic Cocktail. The voters have spoken. The big question tonight is, what did they really say? I'm Joanie Balter. Our election debrief features Marilyn Strickland, she's the president and CEO of the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce, and Heather Weiner, she's a political consultant for progressive issues and candidates. The journalists who are helping us this evening, we have David Kromen from Crosscut.com, and independent journalist, freelance journalist Hannah Brooks Olsen. So, thank you all. Okay, as we know, we live in Washington State, we're still counting ballots, and we'll be counting ballots for some time. But, jump ball here, so whoever wants to start. Who won the pointed and very expensive battle for the soul of Seattle?
The voters won.
Okay. Beyond that?
Well, here's how. You know, all politics is local, we say, but in this case, I think politics were national for us. When Amazon dropped $1.5 million into our local election, I think suddenly the national political discourse about big money in politics, about corporate interests controlling politics, suddenly hit home for the people of Seattle. And what I saw were voters going from not being really sure about who they were supporting to really having somebody that they were voting against.
But, national people don't vote. They're just chiming in.
Right, they're chiming in, but suddenly the national discourse, the national thread that had been underlying a lot of political conversations here, suddenly hit home for people in Seattle.
And, I know, I do agree that the voters have spoken, and that's who makes the decision. And so, we talk about money and politics, and I want to make sure that, you know, money has been part of politics for a long time, especially in Seattle, including a lot of labor money. And that's the system that we're in. Labor contributes money, business contributes money, we contribute to many things. Business helped contribute to ST3, the Sound Transit Ballot Measure. In this particular election cycle, we contributed to I-1000, the Washington State Diversity Equity and Inclusion Act.
Glad you mentioned that.
Also contributed to...
Also doesn't have a clear future, we don't know.
Right, exactly. And so, what I'm trying to say is this: Business has always been part of the civic fabric of Seattle, as well it should be. And it's something that we're going to continue to do, and we're going to be present and accounted for, because at the end of the day, if you want good policymaking, everyone has to be at the table, and we want a seat there, too.
So, let's zoom in on some of the really close races. Many people in this room ran to their phones or their computers and looked to see, you know, these votes inching in, you can almost see them...
Pressing refresh over and over.
One at a time here.
Over and over.
So, let each of you pick a race. Maybe we'll start with the 3rd district that includes Capitol Hill. What do you think about that race, both of you? Because it's so close, and some people think it was, you know, the main subject.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's probably not classified information, and that was a very important race in this city. And when you think about the fact that, you know, you had, you should say, national attention, Bernie Sanders weighed in on it as well. And so, you know, Sean Scott in District 4 didn't win. Shama Sawant is behind right now, but it's not over till it's over. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't declare victory until all the votes have been counted. But I will say this, though: This is an election that's really important, but declaring victory is more about the work that's going to happen after the election is over. Will we solve our big problems? Can we finally come together? That's what matters more than anything else.
Why, just to follow up real quickly with you, was the 3rd district and Shama Sawant so important? A lot of money and a lot of advertising. Why was that single district so important? And what do you actually think will end up happening?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard for me to predict. I've been a candidate three times, and you never know how elections go. And I would say that it was really important for a couple of reasons. You know, I think that a lot of people talked about the tone and tenor of how she conducted herself as an elected official. You had three of her colleagues in the primary endorse someone else before they came back and endorsed her again. And so, I think the fact that there's a lot of attention on that race really speaks to her relationship with her colleagues, and also how Seattle felt that she was treating other people and treating her colleagues as well. Now, tone and tenor is important, but politics is a contact sport, we know that. But I think for a lot of people, it was just really about what she was representing to Seattle, and a lot of people said, maybe she's not what Seattle is all about.
What do you think about the 3rd district?
Oh, boy, I have so many things to say about the 3rd district. And then, I also do want to talk about the other districts, too.
As well, no, I won't.
So, in the 3rd district, what we saw is definitely Shama Sawant had a bullseye on her. And I think there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, she was pulling the council to the left. It wasn't just that people didn't agree with what Shama was saying, it was she was pulling the council to the left. And in a lot of ways, I think, from my point of view, in a good way. She was giving other people cover to be making the compromises because Shama was still left. We certainly saw that with $15 an hour. And she was running the fight, you know, she was doing Fight for 15 while a lot of other people in the room running a compromise. So, I think that's one. I think another reason is, let's be honest about this, she was a very outspoken woman of color, and that, I think, rubbed people a little bit the wrong way. And when I hear tone, I think, well, if the tone was coming from Bernie Sanders, who's a white guy, saying a lot of the same things, is that what we're hearing from people?
Marilyn, maybe you want to say that, or I want to say, a lot of people who don't like Bernie Sanders don't like him because he yells too much.
Yeah, I mean, I...
I just sounded like Bernie myself there.
He does, and he does. I'm going to yell, I'm going to yell. Yes, he does. He does yell, right? But I'm from the East Coast, and so, I think a lot of what we're, maybe what we're seeing is a little bit of a cultural issue here, where a really loud engagement between people that has some raised voices, that has a lot of passion, can be seen as not good here in the very nice Pacific Northwest. On the East Coast, we call that foreplay.
But I will also say, too, I will also say, too, though, as a woman of color, I admit that we get policed all the time. But I will tell you that I am just as irritated with Bernie Sanders as I am with Shama Sawant.
For the same reasons?
For the same reasons, absolutely.
I was at cocktails last night, and I heard somebody say, "I agree completely with Shama says, I just don't like the way she says it." And that was where I was thinking, well, there's something there. Now, let me say, not in Shama's defense, that one of the things that you have to be as a politician is you have to be able to form coalitions. And you have to be able to have people who are all going to show up for you and have your back when things get rough. And I think that that was one of the things that happened to Shama with her colleagues, is they did not show up and have her back until Amazon jumped in.
Okay, so, but let's go to some other districts that are pretty close right now. We can only deal with the ballot counting that has happened so far. So, the 7th district is essentially tied. What about that race? That there was plenty of money in that race, was there not?
Right, and that's tied.
Was that a different kind of so-called good money?
And there, the money was tied. So, there, the money was almost to the penny, exactly the same. And as we see in the race, you know, the race is very close. Andrew Lewis is gaining right now on Jim Pugil, as of the airing, as of the filming of this, who knows what it's going to be tomorrow. I think Andrew Lewis is going to pull it out because of all the students at SPU, late voters who trended progressive in the primary. Now, the issues, there weren't huge differences between those two candidates, I think...
Not that different on issues, but...
Yeah, but what would you say about them?
I mean, I would say that if you look at Andrew Lewis and Jim Pugil, there probably wasn't a whole lot of daylight between the two candidates themselves. And to be honest with you, if you look at both Jim and Andrew, they both sought the endorsement of the chamber. And so did Dan Strauss in D6. And so, when we talk about this whole narrative that I think the media loves to create, it's David versus Goliath, it's good versus evil, it's so divided. In many cases, people really aren't that far apart from each other, but we love a good story.
Well, so, let's talk about going into the election. Couple of weeks ago, this was going to be a referendum on the city council. We had some polling, we'll get to that in the second segment here, that said the city council's very unpopular, therefore, many of the incumbents will not survive. Maybe it switched. Was it a referendum on the city council? Heather, you're shaking your head.
Well, I mean, look, I can't see the cross tabs on that Elway poll, but here's what I've seen in the polling that I've looked at, is that people are unhappy, but if you ask, if you name somebody for the mandibular, they'll say, "Yeah, that person." So, if you say it's the city council, they'll say, "Yeah, the city council." But really, what people's discomfort with is, we're all really revved up about national politics right now, from what we see on social media and what we read. And that animosity and that level of hyper-focus on politics, I think, is being, my therapist would say, perhaps projected onto the city council.
Let's always bring in the therapist.
So, I think that might be a little bit of it. I think also, we all think that the city of Seattle is currently having a huge wealth disparity crisis, and we're seeing the have and have-nots, the gap between them increasing. We're seeing the symptoms of our lack of affordable housing with more and more people on the street. We all agree that we have a problem. The difference is, where do we think we should have the solution? Should we tax big businesses, big corporations, and ask them to pay for their impacts on our city? Or should we ask city government to tighten its belt more and define the revenue somewhere and within this existing city budget?
And I would say, first of all, we should have a plan, because businesses contribute 57% of the city's general fund right now. And so, this idea that business isn't doing its part is just false. 57% of city revenues come from business. Now, does it mean that there's not an opportunity to do more? They're doing things right now. But let's talk about how we come together, how we create a plan, and then say, okay, what's it going to take to pay for it? I believe in public-private partnerships, especially when it comes to housing opportunities, because the public sector alone does not have the resources to build all the housing we need. We have to work together. In order to work together, we have to have good relationships. So, I look at the current projection of who will become a city council member. And remember, four people decided not to run again.
It's a change election, no matter what. You have four people self-exjecting.
Yeah, so, we're going to have a new council, and I think that's an opportunity for us as a city to say, okay, are we going to keep fighting amongst ourselves? Because at the end of the day, it's the degree of a Democrat you are. It's either liberal or ultra-liberal. So, what does that mean to us? How do we get together and decide that we love this city, we want to do good, and we're grown up enough to be leaders and come together and find solutions to work together?
Marilyn has a really good point here, right? Marilyn has a really good point, but I would say, this is where the definition of progressivism becomes really muddled. Because we heard a lot about the chambers' candidates declaring themselves progressive. In fact, the chamber itself was using the word progressive in describing their slate of candidates. And to me, perhaps to the people watching, the people in the audience, progressive means, you know, pro-LGBTQ rights, pro-environment, things that might not necessarily affect a corporation or a very wealthy person's bottom line. But when it comes down to brass tacks, what we're really talking about right now is whether or not the wealthiest few and the top richest corporations that are now using our beautiful city, and they're welcome, fantastic, but whether or not they're going to pay their fair share for infrastructure, schools, libraries, and affordable housing for everyone in Seattle.
And they do.
Before I go to the, bring in the journalist, I have one question for you. Everybody wants to know, did Amazon change the subject of the election? Did they cause a backlash?
You know, I don't think they did, because people were already talking about the chamber pack as being the Amazon pack, to be honest with you. So, as we talk about, did Amazon change the election? I think that we had to have money to win the election, because there were so many people without name ID. So, as far as like, did they make it go backwards or forwards? I don't think they did. I think that they provided candidates who needed more resources to get their names out there and to have voters get to know who they are.
I would disagree. I was just getting my hair done. So, I will give you an anecdote from getting my hair done.
Good job, good job on the hair.
My hair, well, and the woman I was sitting next to, who voted for Egan O'Ryan, said, "I am really upset about that Amazon money coming in," and I...
But didn't take it out on Egan O'Ryan.
But she was a very early voter, and after she wanted to go back and change her vote.
So, she was going to choose dysfunction over change?
No, she wanted to send a message to Amazon. And I think that's what, I think that's really interesting, that $1.45 million being concentrated in what are essentially very small races. Now, look, in one race, in the 6th district for Heidi Wells, the spending for Heidi Wells was $32 per voter, per likely voter, in that one district. Over $1 million in one district. And that is an obscene amount of money for what is a really relatively medium-sized city in the scope of the United States.
I'm going to bring journalist David Kromen, join us from Crosscut.
Sure. This is a question for Marilyn. After the, you know, head tax kind of disappeared, one of the things that the chamber said was sort of advocating for zoning reform, calling Hala up-zone sort of a critical issue. But, you know, I think in the election, you could probably say that Alex Peterson was one of the skeptics, kind of the leading skeptics on the Hala upzones. And, you know, if you look at Andrew Lewis versus Jim Pugil, for example, you'd probably say Andrew Lewis was a little more bullish on kind of adding density in neighborhoods than Jim Pugil. So, can you just sort of bridge that divide for me? Has the chamber changed? Do you not see it in the same way that I see it?
No, we haven't changed. We were very supportive of Hala and MHA when it came out, and we do believe that zoning is definitely one of the factors that we need to address if we're going to add more housing. The higher you can go, the more housing developers can build, absolutely. So, as far as Alex having that position, and you said Andrew having that position as well?
Well, I think Pugil was probably a little bit more conservative on adding more density in neighborhoods than...
Well, I mean, I think that what happens in different neighborhoods, because each neighborhood has its own personality, is that people are listening to what the voters are saying. And so, they're thinking about, you know, what do my voters want, what's important to them, as well. And so, at the end of the day, though, I will say, the chamber, we support upzones and we support MHA, we think that's important.
So, is that an issue where there's probably a little bit of disagreement?
There can be, absolutely. And here's the reality, I've been, I was an elected official for a decade.
Yeah, I don't know if everyone knows you were the mayor.
Yeah, I'm the former mayor of Tacoma. And so, when it comes to politics and how you make decisions, you're not going to be 100% aligned with everyone every time. And people who are, aren't thinking for themselves. So, you have to look at issue by issue, neighborhood by neighborhood, and sometimes you agree and sometimes you don't, but it doesn't mean that people aren't worth supporting.
Journalist Hannah?
Yes, so, I have a question sort of per Heather, what you were just talking about, but sort of in general. We saw a lot of money coming in from Amazon. We also saw one race where they were conspicuously absent, which was referendum 88/ I-1000. Amazon did not contribute almost anything, if anything at all, to this affirmative action issue in Seattle. So, I'm wondering, too, like, can you talk a little bit about sort of where you're reading the tea leaves of those priorities? Why is it that Heidi Wells gets, you know, $32 per voter, but a massive statewide issue that could have really used the cash doesn't?
Well, I can't speak for Amazon, nor would they want me to.
Probably wouldn't be the top choice.
Right. But I did note, you know, one of the things, one of the questions that I got a lot from reporters was, why, how can you be, you're being duplicitous, you're being inconsistent, because Amazon is giving $1.5 million to City Seattle Elections, and is also giving $500,000 to 976, to Yes on 976, which did very much need the money. Aren't you being consistent?
No.
No, on 976, whew, thank you. Yes on 1,000, no on 976.
Supposed to get confused on the other measure, not the...
Yeah, seriously.
The other one's the market.
And I have two answers. One is, they're not, you can hold both those, right? You can, it's okay to say that it's okay for big corporations to give money to initiatives, but let's remember what initiatives they're giving money to. For no on 976, they were giving approximately 27 cents per likely voter in that race, as opposed to $7 per voter, likely voter, in the entire city of Seattle. The second thing is, 976, I can say this now that it's no longer on the ballot, 976 is talking again about the, putting the cost of doing business, of the infrastructure, on the middle class and on individual homeowners and on, or on individual drivers. And Amazon only owns so many cars. In fact, they don't own that many cars, because they actually lease out cars from other people. So, one of the things that I saw with 976 is, again, this is something that helps their bottom line for us to be paying more and for them to be paying less. Remember, Amazon paid zero federal taxes last year. They don't want to pay more taxes.
But they did pay $250 billion in local taxes.
And what's on that sales taxes?
Your answer to Hannah's question about...
Ask him about 88 and affirmative action, and why, it seems to me that financially, passing affirmative action in Washington State would be very beneficial to Amazon. So, it is strange to see them so conspicuously silent on that measure, so that's mostly what I was wondering about.
So, from what I understand, they did make a contribution, but I don't know what the exact amount was. And when we were in Olympia, because the Seattle Metro Chamber did endorse I-1000, because we understand how important it is to small businesses in a society that's equitable and inclusive, excuse me, and they did come down to Olympia and they testified, and they were with us on it. But as far as their financial contributions, I don't know. I know that, for example, there were organizations that did give to it. There was some confusion about the ballot measure itself that they did give, but I don't know what the amount is.
So, I'd like to ask the audience a question. How many of you prefer district elections to citywide elections? So, start with, you prefer district elections, raise your hand if you do. Oh, that's kind of hard to count. So, how many of you prefer, by hand, citywide more? Interesting. Interesting, okay. So, Marilyn, this is something I wanted to talk to you about. Six years ago, the voters made the decision to switch to district elections, and during that time, organized labor was seen more powerful than it normally was. It's always very powerful. But also during that time, it seemed like the business community was politically asleep. Is that a fair description of what happened?
So, I was not in Seattle six years ago.
Right, and you're not responsible, because you worked for...
But I think the question is, are district elections good for a city? And I would say I have mixed feelings about that, because in Tacoma, it works really well. And in Tacoma, it was a good thing, because when you looked at who won the at-large seats, they tended to be upper-middle-class people, and it wasn't inclusive, and they all came of certain neighborhood. So, when you added the neighborhood elections, it gave us a more diverse city council. Now, ironically, when I ran for city council, I actually won an at-large seat, and then I became mayor, and then my successor's an African-American woman. So, black people can win citywide races in Tacoma, let me just tell you that. But I think the idea was, it's more democratic, because more people can participate, and you need far fewer votes to get a seat on the council, and you still have the power of voting. So, you know, I would say that I have mixed feelings about it, because I've heard people in Seattle lament the fact that their district-wide, that there are districts in Seattle now, and that's in some cases how you kind of ended up with what you ended up.
But we do have at-large seats. You have two at-large seats.
And the mayor.
Right, and the two at-large seats are represented by two women of color, who are very progressive, Teresa Mosqueta and Lorraine Gonzalez. And I would like to remind you that Shama Sawant was elected on, as an at-large member.
Originally, yes, yes.
Do we, in fact, Marilyn, this interview as well, did need some kind of a business tax? I won't say head tax, I won't say Amazon tax, but some sort of tax on the large businesses here to pay for some of the things we need.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that I do not believe that businesses are averse to paying taxes. It's why we supported so many measures in this city. But I think the conversation is, what is the plan? How's the money going to be used? And how can we partner with the private sector to make sure that it makes sense and it's effective? I mean, again, this community, especially in Seattle, and especially this business community, is very, very progressive and forward-thinking. And I hate labels so much, but they do participate, they care about the city. So, I think the question for me always becomes, oh, we're just going to randomly tax ourselves? What exactly is it that we want to pay for? And why? And how will it be used? And then, let's have a conversation about what it will take to get there.
That's interesting, because for levies, when we vote on levies, first, right, the business community will put some money into levies. When Ed Murray was mayor, we saw a lot of money going into his pet levies from corporations that also wanted to get something from the mayor's office. And so, we saw, it wasn't, I'm not going to call it quid pro quo, because I know how loaded that word is right now. But we definitely knew, whoa, this is the reason why we were seeing, you know, half a million dollars go into the child, the pre-K measure. So, I think that's one. But again, remember, those are levies that are putting the cost back on individual property owners and/or sales tax, and which are both regressive taxes that hurt lower-income people the most.
And here's a news flash: Businesses do pay property tax.
Businesses do, but they don't pay a property tax, or they don't pay a tax that is proportional to the amount of wealth, it's the same level of proportion to the amount of wealth that they hold and in many cases hoard. And that goes to benefit the CEOs, the people who get bonuses, and the shareholders, which in many cases are international around the world.
Property tax is based on the value of the building, and when these giant buildings are being taxed, I promise you, they're generating proportionate revenues.
So, audience, if you want to join us, you have to hurry up and come on down, because we're going to run out of time.
And this is the issue, by the way. This is going to be the...
Self-interview.
The issue is going to be, is going to end up being, when we get down to brass tacks in Olympia or here in Seattle, when there's a demand for trains, for transit, for affordable housing, it is going to be who is going to pay. And at some point, the pitchforks are coming, because people do not want to keep paying their taxes, yeah.
Oh, we have an audience question. Hi, there.
Hi, my name is Henning. I'm curious, both of you, if you think issues of housing affordability, the kind of the conversation of density versus single-family homes, homelessness, has this started to blur sort of the old alliances? We used to kind of have a coalition of maybe working people, Democrats, progressives, what you'd call them, versus the moneyed interests. Now, we see developers and certain moneyed interests kind of aligning with those that say, development, more density is the answer to housing affordability. So, do you think there's starting to be a little bit of a change in some of the old alliances based on these issues?
Who's your question for? A question for both?
I would like to hear it from both, yeah.
So, some of the old alliances have changed because of the housing affordability issue, is that the question? I mean, I would say that, I'm going to make an observation here, and I know I'm going to say this on camera, but I'm not elected official anymore. Income inequality did not become an issue in America until it started affecting enough white people. Income inequality has been a thing for communities of color for centuries. But now that it's affecting a large swath of white people, now it's a crisis. And so, as we talk about these policies and what we're going to do, we have to make sure that in some ways, we are very, very thoughtful and intentional, because a lot of progressives have good intentions, but they lecture people of color about what we're supposed to do, what we're supposed to be, and they claim they're supporting us. And there's today, there's a consultant on Twitter, and he was talking about the spend that the progressive PACs had in this race, and how the chamber PAC actually spent more money on our campaigns of color than the progressive PACs did.
Wow. Well, I think that's quite a diversion from how much money the Chamber of Commerce put in. So, let's talk a little bit about homelessness and housing. I thought it was really interesting that the chamber and its loosely coordinated PACs had what I really thought was kind of a scorched-earth approach. If you saw the ads, if you saw the TV ads, you got the mailers, and almost everybody did, over and over again, there were pictures of Seattle that appeared to be a hellscape with homeless tents, you know, moms from Seattle sent out things with, you know, photoshopped images of needles. And I question the strategy behind that, because we are supposed to be a city that wants to have more growth, that wants to, we want to be world-class, we want to welcome businesses here. Instead, what we're doing is fear-mongering on exaggerations about the state that Seattle is truly in, instead of really talking about what solutions we want to work on. And I think that backfired, because when people look at those images, they felt fear, they felt anger, they didn't feel a sense of optimism about everybody buying into a solution, which we all agree we need.
Now, anyway, I agree with you. Seattle is not dying, but it needs urgent care. And when we look at Seattle and some of the images that came up, I remember when the Seattle dying special came out, you know, people were very defensive about it. And again, I don't think Seattle's dying, it needs urgent care. But I think the question we have to ask ourselves, and I ask people this all the time, it's like, but why do people think that's true? If Seattle isn't in trouble, then why do, why did that message resonate with--
You mean, why did the, why did the show take off?
Yeah, yeah. Why did it get so much traction? So that's one question I have.
Since we're running out of time, I'm going to bring in a quick audience question and hopefully time for--
Well, this actually, I think, is pretty relevant to what you were talking about here, specifically with, as it pertains to the homelessness crisis. You've both talked about the need to make sure we're spending money efficiently and in the right places. With that in mind, Seattle spends millions of dollars, I think 10 million in 2017, not sure about this figure since, on homeless sweeps, which are basically moving people from one place to another with no sort of end, permanent end goal in mind. Do you think that's money well-spent?
I mean, so my, I'll talk about my experience in Tacoma. We had a giant homeless encampment that became a public health crisis. So I made a declaration of a public health emergency that allowed us, excuse me, to waive rules. So we set up what I would call a stability site, which is a big FEMA tent that had tents inside of them, it had clean running water, it had showers, it had places for people to store things, it had onsite mental health, it had counseling services. And this is not a solution to deal with the homeless crisis and the health, the public health crisis, but it helped get people off the streets right away, especially before winter came. Now, this has been up and running for two years now. And so when you talk about what you can do, this is one example of doing something that is humane and compassionate, but it's not a sweep that just moves people around from one place to another.
So bring in journalist Hannah, Hannah Brooks-Ostman.
Yeah, I'm curious sort of what the, what the chambers, you know, in their sort of putting money in these races and working together with these candidates, what are the sort of policies that you're hoping to see will show up on the dais in chambers once people are elected?
That's a, that's a good question.
Because I think one thing that's been happening a lot is just during this election cycle, council has been sort of stuck and unable to make any policies. And so what are you hoping is going to come help canon?
So I'd say one thing. Number one, there's a difference between campaigning and governing. So when the election is over and people get sworn in, now you have the hard job of governing. And governing means making some decisions that are tough. One thing that we want to see at the chamber is that there is a move by the county and the city to form a regional homelessness authority. And it's going to require approval by the Pierce, Pierce County, see, I'm so stuck in Tacoma, by the King County Council and the Seattle City Council. So I would like to see the newly-seeded council say, you know what, we know this is an important thing because Seattle should not carry a disproportionate responsibility to deal with the regional crisis.
Running out of time, but David Krubman--
Yeah, I mean--
One last question.
I'd be curious to hear from both of you. We'll start with Heather. What do you think the results that we know so far mean for the mayor? And we have, you know, in our polling that we did with Stuart Elway, who's next, it showed that the mayor was more popular than the council. Do you think that's a solid number, or is that a precarious number? Curious to hear your thoughts.
So I think there's a couple of things here. One is, the mayor has done an absolutely fantastic job of putting the blame for a lot of the city's problems on the city council, and particularly on Shama Sawant, when really it is the responsibility of the executive branch to do all of his implementation. The city council is responsible for legislating, it's responsible for managing, you know, for making decisions on the budget, but it is not responsible for the levels of implementation. And that is the mayor's responsibility. I think this council now, which has a progressive majority, perhaps a progressive supermajority, meaning a veto-proof supermajority, will be putting a lot more pressure on this mayor to take responsibility for that, and will not keep allowing it, allowing the mayor to put the responsibility on them.
You may be getting out in front of your skis on--
Six to three. All you need is-- Six to three is veto-proof. So, and the second--
But you don't have the six.
All right, we could go through and count the names, but I don't, you don't want to waste the time.
We're running out of--
All right, so the second, the second point that I would make is, Mayor Durkin took some risks in this election. Now normally, a mayor would stay out of these, these races. First, she came out against Tammy Morales, who won big and will continue to win big as more votes come out. And so that was unprecedented, and also, I think, uncalled for. And the second thing she did was she went out and she defended Heidi Wills, who also lost big. So I think she's bet her reputation a little bit on these, and I think it's going to be interesting to see if she and her allies at the chamber are going to be able to mend fences with a lot of these candidates that are feeling a little pissed off right now.
Do you have a quick response to that?
I do. There's no such thing as a veto-proof majority, just by nature, because it depends on the issue. Elected officials are independent, and they take things issue by issue. The other thing I would also say too, as far as the mayor being popular, most people know who the mayor is. Some people sometimes don't even know who their city council member is. So in order for this to work well, the mayor and the council president need to work together, have a shared agenda, find ways to get in, and really help the council start to lead the city the way that we elect them to.
So we have been hearing some very sharp analysis and pointed analysis on the election with Marilyn Strickland from the Seattle Chamber and Heather Weiner, political consultant who works on progressive and labor issues. We are coming right back with more reflection on Seattle during and after the 2019 election. Thank you. And we are back with a couple of numbers nerds talking more about the mood of our city right now. Jean Balk is the FYI guy at the Seattle Times, and Stuart Elway is president of Elway Research. He recently conducted a pre-election poll on behalf of crosscut.com. Got the attributes there in shape. Stuart, what did the voters say and what polling did you see, yours or others for that matter, that, that helped explain what the voters are talking about?
Well, we're not sure what they said because we're still waiting for them to finish saying it, or for us to finish hearing it. Basically, what we found in the polling, we did a poll about a month ago of likely voters in this election, and people wanted change. They didn't like the, about two-thirds gave the council negative job performance, about two-thirds said they were going to vote for, they were inclined to vote for someone who would change the direction of the council. So they wanted to change the council. Then we went through a number of issues, both issues that have, the council has been working on, and issues that are floating around that may come before the council. And pretty much, they agreed with the direction of the council on all those issues. Except housing, or homelessness. So basically, the top-line conclusion was, they wanted to change the people and get new people in to keep doing the same thing that the council's been doing. So they're going to get that wish.
So then it was about, in some ways, about personalities, about, this is a polite city, has always been.
It must have been. Of course, change was baked in, as you, as we've been talking, there were four open seats, so there was going to be change, no matter if the voters voted or not, there was going to be change. So it had to be about the, the dynamics and the personalities on the council. And you talked about that in the last segment.
Well, I want to quibble with one of your numbers, not that it's not the right number, but you said that the Seattle City Council had 27% approval, which was even lower than some of other polls that had been done. So I wonder about that. Is that sort of like how, you know, people will complain about Congress, but they like their, their own congressman, or they hate the education system, but they love their child's teacher? Is it like that?
I think some of it is like that. If you just, we didn't go district by district and ask, do you like your, your congressman, your council member or not, largely because there's four open seats. So we had to do the council as a whole. Interestingly, Mayor Durkin had much better numbers. She was even, she was about a point to the positive, so she--
Wait, favorable. She was north of 50%, right?
Yeah, so she had much more favorable numbers than the council as a body. It's the only thing we had to really compare it to.
I want to come back to the poll, but I want to bring Jean in as well. Growth is clearly a top issue, that's all people talk about most of the time. How fast is Seattle really growing? I saw a number somewhere that said 50,000 newcomers for the city, but that, then we'd be, have a higher population number than we have. Can you help us with that?
You saw that number in my column, Joni, so I promise you, it's accurate.
You're memorizing everything.
No, it is, so, yeah, so 2013 was the year that Seattle suddenly became the fastest-growing big city in the country. And since then, each year, we have about 50,000 people moving into Seattle City from outside of Washington. That doesn't even include people moving here from inside Washington, from other parts of Washington. The reason it's confusing, and whenever I've included that number a couple of times in my column, and I hear from readers who get confused by it, and the reason they're confused is because the population grows much slower than that. The population growth is 15 to 20,000 a year or so, something like that. What, what you got to remember is people leave Seattle too, so it's, it's an equation.
So the net, the net number--
It's a net. You got people moving in, you got people leaving.
The net is 15 to 20 is what we should think about, right?
Yeah, but, but, yeah, so the, so when you just look at population growth, it kind of disguises the actual number of newcomers we have here. It's huge, it's--
So they come in, but then they leave, or somebody else leaves, and then that's your net.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we don't, you know, the data, the Census Bureau doesn't track people, so we don't know who's leaving, but--
So where is the most growth in the city? Is it, you know, South Lake Union looks like that has a lot of growth, but some of the other areas, where is the most growth?
It is in South Lake Union, in terms of percent growth.
And what about second? What about second on that?
Parts of Ballard, Central Ballard, Capitol Hill, parts of downtown, there's, there's areas throughout the city that are growing, but it's actually, but the way the city's zoned, of course, it allows for density and growth in certain areas and not in others, which remain, you know, exclusively single-family homes. And I did a calculation for a column a while back where I, I looked at the high-density census tracts and the low-density census tracts, and the high-density ones cover about a quarter of the city's land area, but they've absorbed 70% of the population growth this decade.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So Stuart, back to your poll there for a second. You went, you know, you broke down your responders into, into three categories--
Right.
And it had to do with how, how long each of us has lived here.
Right.
So what did, what did you, first, explain those polling categories, and what did you learn about how people feel toward the city based on the, the amount of time they've lived here?
Sure. So first of all, again, the poll was likely voters. And, and we define likely voters as someone who voted in the August primary or the last city election in 2017. They had to vote in one or both of those to be in our poll. That was, and that's about 55% of the electorate, which we assumed was going to be about where the turnout was going to be. We still don't know what the final turnout's going to be. So that's what we were--
Fifty-fifty-five percent is what folks are saying.
Yeah, that's, so we, that's, that's what we aimed the poll at. So, so they're likely voters. So 45, almost half of the voters weren't in our poll, and then the people who aren't registered weren't in our poll. So with that, we asked people, how long have you lived in town? And it broke fairly nicely into three categories that we called newcomers, who've been here 10 years or less, settlers who've been here 10 to 20 years, and old-timers who've been here 20 or more years. Some of us are still sitting--
So you could be 21 and be an old-timer.
You could be, you could be a 21, yeah, and of course, there are people who will say, the 20-year-old, 20-year people are newcomers, but that's a different story. You know, if your name, last name's not Denny, you aren't, you're a newcomer. So what we found generally was that the newcomers were more positive, and so the longer you've been here, the less positive you were.
Ah, you gave something up.
You know, it's like, yeah.
You gave something up.
You get this picture of the, the two guys in the Muppets up in the balcony, you know, what's happening in my city. But what we have to remember, and, and it broke down, as you would expect, the newcomers, 82% of them were under 50 years old. The old-timers, 76% were over 50 years old. The, the newcomers, seven out of 10 were renters. The old-timers, six out of 10 owned their homes outright. And the settlers were buying their homes. So, I mean, it just, that all fit. And it's not that the old-timers were negative necessarily, they were, they were just less positive most of the time. There were only a couple of issues that newcomers and old-timers were on the opposite side.
So let's, let's talk about at least one or two of those.
Bike lanes.
Bike lanes.
Was one.
Okay.
Big surprise, right?
Yeah, wait, let's, let's--
Bike lanes and density, neighborhood density. So--
So talk about the density first, and then--
Well, the, for the density, I have to--
Okay, I told you that was--
It's in my sheet, sorry.
That's fine.
The, the newcomers, 51% liked the direction the city was going on density. The old-timers, 59% didn't like it. So majorities on opposite sides there. And, and bike lanes was about those same numbers, only with 71% of the newcomers liked it, 56% of the old-timers didn't like the bike lane. Everything else, they're lined up, including things coming down the pike, like the large business tax that you talked about earlier.
What was that? That'd be interesting for folks.
Well, 62% of the newcomers were in favor of some kind of tax on large business, recognizing that the head tax has gone. Among old-timers, it was a 48% plurality. So not a majority, but a plurality in favor. And, and the midtermers were, the settlers were sort of in-between all time, follow the line.
Fascinating. Jean, Seattle has long been admired, and people here really love the single-family neighborhoods, but we're increasingly becoming a renter city. What percentage of people live in single-family these days, and what percent rent? And how does that compare to, you know, whatever your comparison year is?
So there's, there's two ways to look at renters versus owners. You can look at the housing units themselves, or you can look at the people. So if you look at the housing units, if you go back 10 years, we were pretty much at even between rental units and owner-occupied homes. But since then, there's just been this explosion of apartment construction in Seattle. I mean, owned homes have increased too, they're, you know, mostly townhomes and row houses, some single-family condos, but, but yet apartment construction's exploded. And so at this point, we're at like 55% owned or rented--
Fifty-five percent rental.
But if you look at people, it's a little different because we have a lot of rentals, you know, renters here who live alone. Homeowners tend to have larger household size kids, you know, so, so Seattle's always had more people living in, in owned homes than in rental homes, until this year. This year, it's, we're now even. So we're, we're fast becoming like a true renter city, like--
Do you think those numbers explain some of the tension between sort of new Seattle and old Seattle?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of things explain this. Stuart was, Stuart was, I think the big one, I would say, is age. Stuart mentioned how newcomers here are young. That is what my data shows too, that three out of four people who've moved here recently are basically millennials. And, and what that's done is, it's actually made Seattle a younger city, like the median age of the city--
Yeah, we were one of--
--has dropped a full year since 2010, which is really unusual, because most of the country, of course, is getting older. You know, we have this huge baby boomer population, and, and Seattle does too, it's aging, you know, 55 and up. But, but you have this influx of millennials that's completely offset that in Seattle. And actually, I wrote a column about this. What's happened in the last, if you go back 10 years ago, the age distribution in, in Seattle was much more even between younger, middle, and older adults. And since then, we've had this explosion of, of younger adults from in-migration, and then this big boomer population that was already here, but they've just aged into the older category. And then, and then almost no growth in the middle. And what's, what that's done is, it's created this much more polarized population in terms of age. And I sort of suggested maybe some of the conflict and tension where, you know, that we're feeling is this kind of exacerbated generation gap, you know? And, and the people, and it's not just age.
I know, okay, boomer versus millennials. Millennials ruin mayonnaise, isn't that--
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
No, no, you know, the old-timer, you gotta remember, the old-timers in Seattle were marching on the freeways when they were young. So it's not like, it's not like--
Politically, it's not, right.
And, and marching in Boeing strikes. And, and so Seattle's a liberal city, even, as I mentioned, even the old-timers are on the progressive side of these issues, just not as much as millennials.
David Krubman, journalist.
Sort of going back to the question I asked before, and then, you know, on the mayor's numbers, I'm curious if you have any insight on why she's managed to sort of stay more popular than the council? And then if you have any insight into how solid those numbers are?
I don't, because that's the only time I've run her numbers, so I don't know how solid those are. I've heard other rumors of other polls that are even more positive. Part of it is, I think, and you were talking about that in the earlier segment, that the council has really gotten a lot of the attention, and particularly, one council member--
Well, let's just go and name her.
Should I name her? Sawant has really become the, had become the face of the council. And my favorite insight or quote of the whole poll that we did was in David's piece about the, the reason that this voter liked Jenny Durkin as mayor is because he didn't have to think about her all the time.
Oh, very interesting.
Given, you know, the contrast with the national scene, that's not bad. So you just, you just kind of do your job and keep your head down and let other people take the flak, and you get better numbers.
Jean, I have a question that I feel you are uniquely qualified to answer. Have you noticed demographic changes on the dance floor?
Whoa.
I do some DJing.
Oh, that's funny. Oh, that's funny.
No--
But it's in South Lake Union, though, like it's at Lo-Fi.
Well, you're right. And when we started that, South Lake Union was, people loved it because if they came from somewhere else, you could park right in front.
There you go.
You know, like in, like in a movie, you just park right in front of the club. And now, of course, the change around there is, is mind-blowing. And I think that club now, that has now become like a neighborhood club where there wasn't that has now become like a neighborhood club where there wasn't a neighborhood before. So I get, I get this, I've never surveyed anyone, but I get the sense people who come out in South Lake Union actually live around there now.
That is an interesting change.
Which is different, yeah.
Jean Balk, the Seattle Times loves to talk about the Seattle freeze, and you've written a lot about it. What, what is the Seattle freeze, and do you think it's real? We won't tell anybody, just tell us, just tell us.
Well, my understanding of it, I don't, I don't know that there's a standardized definition, but my understanding of it is this thing that when you move to Seattle, people are polite and nice and everything, but they, they won't let you into their friend's circle, like they hold you at arm's length. That's, that's how I understand it. But I did write a column about it. I spent about three days responding to the email I got from that column, and I found out that people have all sorts of different ideas about it. And I think if it happened to you--
Well, one woman wanted to be invited to dinner, right? Wasn't that--
The woman who wrote the pigeon piece?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, which is why I wrote about it. People see, I mean, I moved here 17 years ago, and I don't remember people talking about it much back then, and I have no recollection of it, so I guess I don't personally believe it, but--
You don't personally believe that it's, that it's real, or you don't practice it, or what?
I hope not. I mean, I don't want, you know, I feel like if it happened to you, then it's real, and if it, if it didn't, then it's not.
I don't know why these young people want to go to dinner with these little geezers anyway. And maybe as, as the city, what's, youngifies, what's the opposite of ages? That'll change, and new people bringing in new attitudes, you know, who knows?
Can either of you explain the sound transit vote? You know, this was supposed to be something people voted for a few years ago, but then they, you know, within the campaign, although there wasn't a big campaign on the one side, they were told that the valuations were, were off. But you guys, you have data, you talk to people who are willing to be in polls. Was this a big surprise? I mean, one number that stuck out for me, this is how big a nerd I am on election, day and night and week, or however long it goes on, was Snohomish County's vote in favor of Tim Iman's initiative. It was 61%. I was like, oh my gosh, I thought that they wanted sound transit to come their way. What do you know of that?
It surprised me, too.
Remember, a sound transit district is a narrower district, to be fair, than voting statewide, which is a whole other question.
Yeah, first of all, it wasn't a sound transit vote.
But there had been a sound transit vote.
There had been a sound--
And the answer was yes. Let's have sound transit.
It passed in King County, it failed in both Pierce and Snohomish, right?
Yes, that's right. Yes, that's right.
It's, maybe they thought the train would be there by now? It's hard to explain. They're waiting, they're standing at the station, the train's not here. I'm voting no.
I, yeah, I mean, in King County, you know, we're one of the, I wrote a column about this a while back, that we're one of the only metro areas where high-income people are more likely to take transit than low-income people. That's particularly true in King County. And so, you know, this was about money, maybe--
Money didn't talk.
Yeah.
It did not talk in that statewide--
Well, in King County, you know, but, yeah, I don't know about--
But you also recently had a story about car ownership about Seattle. This was very interesting.
Yeah, car ownership.
We stood out nationally.
Yeah, we're one of the few cities where car ownership rates have declined, and pretty dramatically here. Yeah, transit is way up, especially in Seattle, but regionally, I just was looking--
But this vote--
Yeah, I know.
--will change the ability to address the bus, the sound transit, correct?
Yeah. The numbers, you know, between Seattle and the rest of the region are really dramatically different, though. I mean, almost a quarter of the population here, Seattle residents, now takes transit to go to work. It's a huge increase just in like, you know, since the start of the decade. But then you go to like Pierce, Snohomish County, it's like 5%, 6%.
Yeah, it's way lower.
Huge difference.
Maybe it's just usage, yeah.
Well, yeah, one of the things we still don't know is what the voter turnout was. The Iman anti-tax initiatives are typically in off years when voter turnout is lower and the electorate is more conservative. And they pass, but they do not, the number of votes they get are not a majority of the electorate, but they pass that election. So we vote for sound transit in one year, we vote for this in another year. It's not exactly the same electorate. And, and sound transit boundaries don't quite fit the counties exactly, so it's not the same electorate. I mean, it's still, you know, kind of a staggering defeat for the sound transit people.
It was--
But, but it's not exactly the same people voting, and that, that anti-tax block has been there for a long time. And, and you get that vote all the time, and then you get a few more and a lower turnout, and you win.
David Krubin.
Jean, sort of going back to your earlier comments about where growth is, I'm curious if you have some sense, now that we're in a district election system, curious if you have some sense of when Seattle is going to have to reexamine its districts, if some parts are growing faster than--
You know, I've been meaning to look at that, and I wish, I wish I had, now that you asked that question. But when, when they started the districts, they were all basically equal, they did it so that they'd all be equal in population. I think it was 90,000 people per district, but I, that's the number I kind of remember. But, yeah, if you look now, like the seventh, which includes South Lake Union and downtown, is like Lower Queen Anne, you know, and that's must have grown, and, and the third, which includes Capitol Hill, you know, some of these districts must have grown a lot faster, but I don't actually have the numbers. But, yeah--
It's a future piece, is what it is.
Yeah, I think so.
Audience question, Laura Inveen, hi.
Mr. Elway, how is the accuracy of polling affected by the decrease in use of landlines or the fact that folks don't answer their landlines anymore?
Well, we, we don't survey just landlines.
What percentage are cell phones?
Over half now.
Wow, that's, it used to be very expensive.
Yeah, so we, we do two things. We, as I said earlier, we start with a list of registered voters, so we're working from voter list. We call landlines and cell phones. And in, in some surveys, we do, we text the cell phones and invite people to participate that way. And then we're also mailing people and inviting them to take the survey online. So we're using every arrow in the quiver to compensate--
You're stopping people on the streets.
Well, we aren't doing that. That's these people's job. But to compensate for the decreasing landlines, and frankly, the, the thing that almost ruined the polling business was caller ID. So the industry is evolving into a lot of different ways to compensate that. And the polls, there are a lot of studies being done. The big difference, the big question is, are the people who answer the polls different in material ways from people who don't answer the polls? And so far, no.
Hannah, tight question, tight answer.
Yes, I have a, this is a quick one. So in the changes in the electorate and in the changes in the demographic of the city, is there any indication of whether or not Amazon employees actually vote? Like, we hear a lot about their money. Are there more registered voters? Tell me about it.
No way to tell that, although you have to assume that most of these new people in town and most of the younger new people in town are Amazon people or related to Amazon people.
Other tech.
Other tech, yeah. That's who's, who's moving into town. Old people don't move into cities. So we can assume that. But as has been the case, they don't vote. Go to my sheet again. People under 30 in Seattle represent 27% of the population, but 13% of the registered voters. People over 65 are 14% of the population, but they are 25% of the registered voters. And when you get down to how many of the registered voters actually vote, that exaggerates it even more.
Thank you. We got to go. We have been talking with pollster Stuart Elway and Seattle Times FYI guy Jean Balk. Thank you both so much. Civic Cocktail will take a holiday break and return in February. Thanks a ton for watching. Thank you.